This is the Thursday, the 21st meeting of February for the Tufton Borough Planning Board. We have a crowd tonight which is kind of unusual for the planning board because usually it's just the applicants, so I just wanted to take a minute to explain to everyone how the meeting's going to work, how the applications are presented, what the role of the board is and such and so forth, just so that everybody understands what's going on and, you know, it's a good experience for all parties. So the planning board's job is to review applications that require more scrutiny than a normal building permit or something like that. The planning board also writes zoning, but that's not really what we're dealing with So the planning board's job, primarily what we're going to see here tonight, is doing site plan reviews. Site plan reviews are projects that are permitted under zoning, but that require a higher level of scrutiny, so that we'll be looking at things like drainage, or access, or right-of-ways, and things like that. So that's primarily what we're going to be dealing with tonight. So we have three applications, so two applications and one preliminary application, or two preliminary applications here. The applications have been formally submitted, the butters have been notified. Preliminary applications, which are, we have two of them tonight, are conversations that applicants want to have before they do a formal application to the planning board. So they can come up and ask questions, they're non-binding either on the applicant or on the board, and they're just so that they know what direction to go in before they hire very expensive engineers and surveyors and things like that. We're going to go through a couple of housekeeping items, which are basically just approval of minutes after, and we're also going to start the meeting off with any questions that you guys have as far as procedures or things and how they're going to go. And then we're going to move into the applications. The applications, we do a little bit of housekeeping at the beginning as far as seeing whether the application is complete, meaning that all the boxes are checked, and also that we assume jurisdiction. After that, the applicant is going to present what they would like to do, and the board will go back and forth with the applicant, and then we open it up to the public. So if you would like to speak, you're welcome to, of course, we just ask you to say your name, your address, and speak for or against the application. Again, you know, this is a meeting, we are all neighbors, we do try to keep things civil, never had a problem with it not being, but I always like to say. After everyone's had their talk, we'll either decide to continue it because we can't resolve everything in one meeting, or we'll close the public session and we'll move forward and approve the application. So with that being said, and before we go to the approval of minutes, does anybody have questions about how the meeting's been done, or how the applications are treated, or any part of it, other than specific questions about the application itself? Okay. I do want to apologize as well, we had, one of the applications, I think it was Fenton's, before he had submitted it formally, we were having a meeting, and I accidentally grabbed his application with a stack of other paperwork, and I had it myself for a couple of days, and I believe there was a couple of people who wanted to take a look at it, it was not available. I apologize, I was completely, my fault if I noticed I had it, so, my apologies. Okay. With that, did anybody see anything on the minutes that was a problem?
There's no problem with the way they're written, it's just when the warrant was going to show up, it's got to look a little different than this, because what's crossed off on this wasn't on the original zoning, it's what we talked about, but it wasn't on the zoning, so what's going to be on the zoning is what's actually the rule now, and then the new. So that's all.
Do you feel we need to read that out for the public record?
Not maybe self-explanatory when I see it.
I think the minutes come or something. All right, so our first scheduled appointment for this evening is Fenton Barney?
I'm probably going to approve the minutes.
I'm sorry, yes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as written, other than what Jack pointed out, if it were?
Well, I don't approve it, but I can't vote on it because I...
Jack and I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second, all those in favor?
All right.
All right. All right, so Fenton Barney is the first application, it is Tax Map 3, Block 1, Lot 24. Before we start, Fenton, I think it's worth giving everyone a little background of what's going on with these sand pits in town, if you don't mind. So what has brought a number of sand pits in town that have been operating for long periods of time before the planning board, is not that the sand pits suddenly decided to all have massive expansions or doing anything like that. Basically, what has happened is in, I think it was 1980?
Or in the...
Around the eighties, yeah. In some point in the early eighties, there was paperwork that a town was to file in order to make the sand pits compliant with state law. It's a law, it's a 150 by E, which is government rules for sand pits in the state of New Hampshire. So it continued on in the town of Tufton Borough, if you had a property that had sand, basically all you did was go the whole, filed an intent to excavate with the town, and everybody was happy. Until, one day, the state showed up at a recently approved sand pit, which was the one on Sandy Old Road, and said, hey, you're missing a town permit number on this sand pit. So the town was not able to just simply say, all right, let's write up a permit and issue it. They had to follow laws and rules that were set forth by the state. So the planning board met a couple of times with the woman who's in charge of this with the state, she's a nice woman by Mary Pinkham Lerner, and talked with her about how we could treat this. So basically, what the state elapsed is if you have an existing sand pit that had an intent to excavate and has had intent to excavate in the past, they could continue to work within the confines of an area that had been opened up for excavation. So that means they, you know, if the area had been stumped, you know, and detreed and ready to go, they are allowed to work within that area. If they want to go beyond that area, then they have to start from the beginning, which requires, in most cases, the state alterations of terrain permits, as well as Town of Tufton Borough site, special exceptions, which is a trip to the zoning board. So basically, what the town has been doing is taking the steps that we need to take and the sand pit needs to take to come into compliance with these pits in the area and to make them legal to operate as they always have. So it's not, there's not a sudden rush on sand in case of emergency. Did anybody have any questions about that, before we get going, since that's a number of the applications?
So two years ago, on the town ballot, was a change to our town zoning to bring us into compliance with the state law that we've gone out of compliance with for about 20 years. And at that time, the way it was set up is that pits that were existing and had been operating, we couldn't formally grandfather them forever, the way the state law provided for it, because that period sunsetted in 1991. But we were able to write in a period of, like, two years, that you could continue to operate your pit, but at the end of that period of time, you had to have a formal approval. And April 1st of this year is when we, I believe that's where, is when we get to that point. So what we're all seeing is, the guys that have been taking sand out of their pits right along for a long time, are all coming in to the planning board to get approval to operate their pit. But part of that is they can't operate anything outside of what they've done in the past, or they'll have to come in with, as Matt said, all of the engineering and surveying and all of the stuff that the state requires for a brand-new pit.
I can just add to that, what we're actually doing tonight is site plan review, which you guys didn't say, of the existing pits.
Correct. Anybody have any questions?
What lot is this exactly that you guys want to do this on?
Are you talking to Fenton? I'm going to read that, Rick.
Yeah, Mountain Shadows?
Yes.
What lot is it?
Well, let's see, Fenton is on Lot Number Tax Map 3, Block 1, Lot 24. So he's going to have a full blow-up up on him.
It's not a part of the subdivision, it's adjacent to the subdivision off of Mountain Shadows Drive.
Is it the one that you guys just took all the trees out of?
No. No. That's one of the subdivision building lots.
This is pre-existing, it's been there for 13 years, what we're talking about now.
Oh, I thought you guys were talking about building a brand-new one.
No, 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 that's what you've got to make really clear. When the state law changed and Tufton Borough adopted the zoning two years ago, what the requirement was, that was before April 1st of this year, you had to come in with site plan review application for the existing conditions that are out there, and the potential area that could be excavated based on what was already stumped and rubbed. So this is not a new pit, this is not a new anything.
Basically, we're documenting what's there.
Right.
And part of what we're doing is finding water levels, elevations, and the confines of the area that are excavated, so that it's documented.
Okay.
If anything, it's more restrictive than what would existed before, which was just a keep on digging.
Okay. Sorry, that was mine.
Nope, it's okay, it's why we're here. Fenton, you're up.
Yeah.
We have reviewed the application, and the application is complete. Can I have a motion to serious限制 jurisdiction? Yeah. Say it. All those in favor? Fenton, you're up.
Yeah, so, I got one more. Everybody, everybody just can't stop this one. All right, so, just to show you what we have, this is Mountain Shadows Drive coming up, this is Gillian Jarvis, right next door, okay? This is the remaining lands. This is the road into the existing pit, for you guys that know where it is, and this is the existing excavation area. What's been excavated is about a third of an acre, about 33,000 square feet. Potentially, there's a dashed line and I have a blow-up. And we have to really go out and verify it in the spring, when the snow's gone. But the total excavation area that would be pre-existing, potentially, is about 66,000 square feet, so it's about an acre and a half. So as far as, you know, you guys go, Chapels are, here's, this is Wizzo, you know, Chapel down here. So again, just a little bit, a third of an acre out of the 26 acres, is where the existing excavation area is up on the hill, okay? That's not going to change, there's a little dashed line here, if we switch plans. Actually, you have a play there. So what we did is, you guys can pass around, take one or one. So what this is, this is a Google overlay, Google Earth overlay of the existing area, based on the survey work that we've had done over the years, okay? So the large area interior is the base of the pit, where the lines are close together with the slope, okay? And then there's an outer dashed line that would be the limit of the excavation area for future excavation. So again, this is about a third of an acre that's currently excavated, and potentially about an acre and a half, depending on where we'll finally decide in the spring, just because you can't go out there and do it right now, okay? So it's no mass expansion over what's there. It's not a hole in the ground, it's basically, it actually goes uphill from the road that comes in, and it's similar to what Holberg was doing down at his house. When we're done, it just, it ends up being a flat line, more than a deep excavation. There really is no hole in the ground here, this is all up slope from the road coming in, okay? So in a nutshell, that's the whole deal. There are no state permits required for this, because it's under 100,000 square feet now or will be in the future, so there's no alteration in the terrain or anything else. It's, you know, a third of an acre is basically a good-sized house lot. I think Don Griffin, on his house right now, probably has more area leveled than this entire excavation, okay? So it's a relatively small footprint. And there's really no intent to expand this beyond what we're using it for currently. I took a few hundred yards out of here this year, and it all went in the trench from your house down to Don Griffin's house. You know, that's the extent of it. I don't have any big, heavy equipment anymore, so there's no massive sand pit here. I'd like to keep it open, because just like we did this year, there's going to be a few hundred yards, you know, coming and going here or there, but that's about the extent of the excavation. I don't intend, at this point, to go through the formal process of expanding this, and at any great extent, okay? You guys have any other, anybody else specific question?
Are there any restrictions on the road, Fenton?
Restriction?
Yeah, I mean, as far as covenants or restrictions on the road that prevent you?
For using this?
No.
There's nothing, no. No, I, I have the simple D in all of those, in and out, the whole way up. No, it's, again, it's pretty straightforward, the vast majority of what we use is on-site.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
On the second page here, we've got the dashed line with the limit of future excavation. That's the area that's all open already?
Well, it is, but it's going to be subject, when you weren't here at the last meeting, the concept is, come springtime, we'll go out stake it, and then we'll put it formally on the plan, but we're, I put it on there procedurally, again, it was based on Google Earth, who what was cut. So once we can actually get out there and see the ground, then we'll put it on formally and, you know, readjust the plan. Well, I guess what we're asking for tonight is the additional subject to that we do with the potential excavation area, we have to get a test pit done once the ground's thawed out, and I'm not sure what other condition you guys are aware of.
We've been pretty consistent with what we've been requesting, if people want that they internally drain, you know, meaning that the dry...
Right, there's no hole, right.
You know, so that nothing runs out of it. It's not going to grandfather any environmental, you know, problems that may exist. We would, of course, have a vote on these things. Subject of three elevations, walk-in, staking, and blazing. And I think that's pretty much consistent. Just so that everyone understands, we've, on these, we've imposed a few regulations or conditions of approval, that we try to be consistent on all of these pits. One is that the pits are either internally drained, meaning that if water falls in them, that it drains down into the pit itself and not out of the pit. It's a state regulation that the water table be determined, because they're not allowed to come within five feet of that, so you have to take a test pit to determine what that is. A few elevations, which, you know, tells us the elevation to the pit to make sure of overexcavation. Reclamation, which is when the pit's exhausted or done, you know, something happens to make it, you know, proper. Do we have to have a legislative plan with the state? We have to have, you know, we write down what the plan is as far as line of slopes and things like that. And that's about it.
When we go out and walk it, we'll determine the size of trees. So this is a tree out there that's 20 inches, and they have, we know that wasn't rubbed five years ago. Let's just get some really fast growing trees.
So the applicant walks it with Jack and myself, I'm sure if any butters or neighbors wanted to walk in as well, no one would object, and we blaze the trees and say this is the confines of the area that they, you know, were struck at. Any other questions from the board? Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
Yes, Mike Jarvis, Tipped by Mountain Shadows. My daughter and son-in-law were not notified at this meeting. I just want to let you know that. They are the immediate butter, Gillian Jarvis, right next to the lift. Yeah, that address was changed back in December, and it was sent to the Red Island address.
Whatever is in the computer that they, he uses. So if it wasn't changed in the computer in a week...
Well, haven't changed it at Town Hall in December.
Right, for a license, but whatever, I don't know, where did her...
I'm just saying, she's...
Not lightly, it just, where does her tax bill go? Because that's the computer...
So they're TO-bots now, that's what she changed.
Right, that's the address, so I can look it up right now.
That's what she changed. I just want to say, she is the immediate butter, and I know she has issues with this, unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight, so I'd like her to be here, to hear this, because she is right next door to the pit.
What we'll do is, we'll take a look, I mean, we're all about being legal, I mean, drive in, well, you don't have to...
She still is not, Mary Jarvis, 55 Mountain Shadows, she till this day has still not received any notification, any return from the post office, et cetera.
So what we'll do, because, I mean, compliance and legality is the most important thing we do, obviously, this meeting's, you know, moved along at some point. So what we'll do is, we will check into what was sent where, we have you.
I have 55 Mountain Shadow.
That's, that's us.
So what's, what is your daughter's name and what her...
Gillian Jarvis, and she's at 43 Mountain Shadows Drive.
We have 121 Spockard Avenue, Wardwood Island.
See that?
Was sent there. So that's what's in the computer still on the front counter, whether it got changed or not, that's what they have.
But she went in, I'm just saying, she went in in December...
But heaven's side is different than heaven's side, that's all I'm saying.
We'll check to make sure it was...
And she couldn't make it tonight, I just told her about it recently, she already had something to do, so, but she, but she most certainly has issues with, and it's not the person against Fenton, but she definitely has issues that she would like to voice regarding this.
So what we'll do is, we'll check and make sure the notification is legal. If it's not legal, then, you know, the meeting was unlawfully posted, so they have to be redone. So, you know, and just for, so everyone knows, you can also, if you can't attend the meeting, you can also write a letter, and it gets read, it gets read into the public records.
May I ask when the addresses were pulled?
The first time, probably back in November. Cooper Dark did put the list together when he did the plan. So, was that what was in that, was that, was that the town, the time is what we pulled? That's the same deed, it's the same on her deed at the registry is the same.
That would have been her address on the deed.
But it's the same at the town, because you pull it back and it's right off.
You did change it for the time?
Yeah.
As I said, we'll, we'll check the legality, so, I guess, compliance and legality is the most important thing. Anybody else?
Frederick Barney, to Lindsay Wayne, right off of Mountain Shadows Road. I just, I don't know really what the zoning things are in the town of Tufton Borough, but the Mountain Shadows community is becoming more and more a residential community. Personally, I'm not, I'm not representing the Mountain Shadows Property Owners Association, even though I am on the board, I'm talking about myself. I thank you guys on the right track, getting everything legal and getting everybody on the right, on the same page. But this is no longer just a little country road going nowhere, there's houses on this road now, it's a residential community, and it's, I think, even the gentleman that's putting in this application knows and hopes it'll become more of a residential community. And I don't, I don't think we need to have a commercial operation going on there. That's my personal... Thank you.
You have a question?
James Dizano, 95 at Ferry Circle, just curious on how many trucks are going to be going in and out of this? And he said he owns the roads, but we pay to fix these roads.
It was my help.
Well, let's not get into your help, but...
It was my help.
Yeah, your help is driving back and forth on the road, that's your help. And...
Be nice.
All right.
I'm just curious.
Please let me answer.
As far as what? Well, first of all, the only one that still has a 10-wheeler that drives in and out of there is Mike Jarvis.
Yeah.
I don't own a 10-wheeler, I haven't in seven years.
So who's going to be hauling this fill and out?
Nobody, all this is, is an application.
Well, no, no, you have an application, but if it passes, you're going to have people driving over that eight-inch water pipe you've got underneath the road there.
No, that's not true.
Oh, okay.
This is not a commercial sand pit, that's what we're trying to explain. Nothing changes.
I'm just asking, how many trucks are going to be going in, I've got a granddaughter that drives up and down that road.
Excuse me one minute. So there could be none. There could be, in a day, 50.
No, there never will be 50.
I mean, potentially.
Because there's not that much sand there to remove.
But it's, it's not a large reserve that he has there. If he were to have a large number of trucks, it would be exhausted pretty quickly. But, so to answer your question, if this wasn't Fenton saying, hey, I want to, you know, rapidly take out border, you know, this is just him following the rules set out by the town and the state in order to be in compliance. This wasn't triggered by him wanting to increase what he was doing?
Well, if I knew he was going to make a sand pit out of this, then I wouldn't have bought in there.
Well, there's already a sand pit, that's why.
Yeah, but he hasn't used it. He's taken out a couple loads a year or something out of it.
Who?
You.
That's what is going to continue.
I'm just saying, I just asked how many trucks are going to be going in and out.
Nothing's going to change from what's been there, we are not making a sand pit out of it. This is strictly to bring this pit and the other people sitting here's pits in compliance, because this town finally decided to regulate sand pits. This is not me requesting a sand pit, it's not the same thing. All this is, is a site plan application for a pre-existing pit, that's what it is. Nothing's going to change, there's not that much sand there. The most sand I can excavate right now is about a little over an acre, which if I took it all out, would take about three days with trucks. There's just not that much sand there.
This, this will actually be more restrictive than what existed in the town.
Correct. Because it limits the potential excavation area, where up until right this time, none of these people in here with pits had any restrictions on how much you could excavate over time, that's just the way it was written. Okay, it's, the town is finally stepping up regulating permits, regulating pits. Steve Hunter just went through this a couple of months ago, his operation isn't changing. What I'm doing isn't changing, okay? All it is, is getting it on paper for existing conditions, that's what's going on.
Are you satisfied?
No.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Is the intention, Fenton, what's your intention for this? But other than, other than putting it on the books correctly?
Nothing, nothing, other than...
Long-term?
Yeah, exactly what we're doing now, it's 100 yards in and 100 yards out. The only sand that's come out of there this year went into the electric trench from his house, down to Don Griffin's.
What is the intention, moving forward, for the, for the remaining sand that's in the pit?
Well, I mean, as much as I need some here or there, I mean, if I take out 500 yards a year in a three-and-a-half-yard truck, that's a lot of trips.
So you're running it out of Mountain Shadows to other locations?
Well, potentially, right, it's still a legal operation.
Why can you not use that sand, which I know is not a good road, road-based sand, to fix the roads in Mountain Shadows?
Because there's no binder on it, it's washed sand, it's septic sand. You could, you can put as much as you want in there, it'll be gone in two days, you need to drive...
Because you start trucking in and out of there...
Well, no, your husband does more trucking in and out of there than I've done in the last two years, I don't even own a wheeler.
That's not true.
Well, you drive down the road with a wheeler, do I own a wheeler?
What you just stated, as far as me moving more material in and out of there, is absolutely not true.
Well, sometimes your wheeler go in and out of Mountain Shadows.
Maybe two or three times a week, depends.
Right, that's two or three times a week more than I do, because I don't own one, okay? So, very simple.
I knew you would come around and push it back on me, Fenton, I knew you would.
He's waiting for the roads, and you own the wheeler.
Okay, that's...
I knew you would.
Well, you own a wheeler.
Enough.
I won't go there.
Are you sure?
I respect, I respect what you're saying.
That's not the intention of this meeting.
Again, I think he's, he has answered the question that his intention... Again, I think he's, he has answered the question that his intentions for the pit are no more intense tomorrow than they are today.
Mike, what, next question is basically, when, when is the reclaiming of the pit gonna happen? If he has that few sand and that little sand in there, when, when are you gonna start reclaiming that pit?
Then I stop filing intent to excavate.
It has to be closed for two years. No intent to stop excavation for two years.
But I, I thought when I read the, the, um.
Statute?
Statute, that, that had to be so somewhat of an ongoing process.
Correct. If the area.
But two years limitations if you're not doing, that's when it gets closed.
And was the application also given to the conservation committee for this statute? Cause the conservation committee has issues with what's happened in there as well.
Oh, yeah.
And that, and that, and this clearly states it.
We'll look into that. I don't owe a lot of the time and I don't wanna give you the wrong information.
There's other stipulations in here that if anyone's interested in that, need to be addressed with this application as well.
Does anyone else have questions or?
Uh, Michael Fairchild, four apart, she's Ferry Circle. We didn't even get a notice about the meeting today until one of my neighbor's wife stole this today.
You're probably not a butter.
Not a butter.
What's that?
You're not a butter.
But we still live there, why haven't we gotten a notice about a meeting?
Property has to drop the butter, I asked to get the butter.
And it has to be noticed in some public places as well. Does anyone else have any questions or? Do I have a motion to close the public meeting?
You're gonna continue.
Check on it.
Do you wanna continue or do you wanna?
For the best conditions. Yeah, well, just on the note.
Okay. We're gonna leave the public session open because we're gonna continue it to check on some legalities to a date.
And even the seventh of February, I mean, I'm sorry, February. The seventh of March or March twenty-first? We have formal applications scheduled for the twenty-first. I don't know what we're doing on the seventh yet.
I have no problem with it.
We're both away on vacation for a week, so I would suggest the twenty-first because.
Well, the other, the other thing is, we, if there, if there was, if there's been a defect in the notice, then we can't do it on seven, we got one on the twenty-first. So I would suggest we continue, continue it to one, uh, one month from today.
Fenton, is that a date for you, since you have the application?
Nope.
So, can I have a motion, continue date served until the twenty-first Thursday?
So.
Is that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Should we get someone out now?
We're done.
No, actually, I think, I think we're on a downhill slope on this one. Okay, so the next up, we have YMCA Camp Bell Matt Tax Map forty-three dash thirty to work site plan review to construct Stat, Stat housing in Barn, it's a formal submission, which means it is not a preliminary. And I think site.
Aye.
Real quick, um, the application is complete.
With the most of your technical decision.
Aye, exactly. And second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I looked at this quickly just before we get started.
Yeah.
There was a couple of issues that you may have the answer for.
Sure.
But I just wanted to give you a heads up on it. Uh, one is, um, a copy of the conservation use, usement?
Yep, so we have a conservation use limit with the New Hampshire State Protection Forest.
Okay.
Uh, we submitted to them a year and a half ago, a master site plan that includes, uh, this work. And, uh, they've approved this concept of tree clearing and kind of moving. A big part of our whole conserve, master site plan and all this work is to move buildings off the waterfront, so we'll get rid of the, make the shed and eventually pitch it in back and move away into that area, it comes up into this area. Our conservation use limit allows us to do, uh, items that directly support the camp. So it blocks from private development, but not for camp purposes.
Okay.
So, so just a, a, a mild application. In that kind of a situation, when you review that with them, is there documentation that gets done and signed off on and that sort of thing that can go into final order?
Um, I can provide that if you guys want.
Yeah, we'll do a letter and, you know, such and so.
Maybe I'm a pen, sorry.
Yep, there, there were just a couple of things.
Yeah, that's, I can, uh, get a letter from, from the society. Great.
Yep, signature.
Can you get a copy of the actual use of this block?
Yeah, if you can get us a copy of it as well. We're gonna need a signature block on the site plan. So, site plan review regulation requires, um, some explanation of drainage and such and so forth. This doesn't have anything, so we'll either need a waiver request or some drainage.
Yeah, so, um, we can do, well, I guess I'd ask what, what you rather have, what you recommend. We did, so we have that weapons crossing, that permit.
Yep.
We have it, it's been completed and approved.
Oh, yeah.
So what do you, um, are you talking about in this area or around?
Yeah, so basically, you got a, site plan review regulations require the drainage to be, you know. So, if it's a small project, people normally ask for a waiver and we say, you know, you're building a two bay, you know, something and we, we put a little swale there. You've got a pretty good sized project here.
Yep.
You got an elevation change, uh, pretty good elevation change. So normally they would do, they would take the water from this, put it into some swales on the lower side, something like that. And, and, you know, that's about it. And the only other thing, um, I'm just trying to give you an active list, so it's.
Yep.
We have a couple of dispensers and if those are anything beyond, uh, skid tank DOT compliant ones or is in ground?
No, they're not in ground.
They'll be above ground.
Like the one you have now, two seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll just need, just to cover your bases, we'll need, like, like an explanation of what they are.
Sure.
And if you got a manufacturer spec on them, just saying they're, you know, double walled with containment.
Yep.
Secondary containment, a hundred and ten percent of primary and, you know, that sort of stuff.
Yep. So explicitly should have double wall tanks and, um, uh.
Containment drainage.
Drainage.
Yeah.
So there were nice enough things there that we'll have to continue it.
Yep.
But, but I'd like to go forward and get through the rest of it, if you're good with all that.
I'm good, I can provide all that.
Yeah, I can also.
Yep.
All right, so did we accept jurisdictions?
Yes.
Yes, yes, all right. So with that, so what do you?
What are we proposing?
Yeah.
So, um, we basically are picking, um, on this site, we, uh, we'll put in a driveway, uh, to that year round home, which would be the only year round home on this, um, property. It's a two thousand square foot, um, home. That would tie in from a wastewater point of view into the new wastewater treatment facility.
They did a brand new system design.
Yeah, and that's, um, just starting construction now. And then the facilities barn area would be mostly, well, about half the square footage is unwinterized storage. Um, open bay, some of it for like wood chips and things like that, others are closed for sports equipment, things of that nature. And then a, uh, heated facility so we can do work in the winter with a small office, uh, and bathroom in it. And then, uh, and then just enough turnaround for, uh, deliveries. So we get once a year a large truck delivery with all our shipping goods equipment, things like that. It'd be nice to have a place where they can actually turn around and back down, she's like, but, uh, that's it.
Anybody on board, have any questions? When you say maintenance facility, what sort of things are you gonna be doing?
Yeah, so we'll, uh, we might split some wood there and store it, um, but usually we split that onsite. Sometimes we'll store our wood chips there under the cover and move it when we need it. And then inside the building is like curving, things like building a bunk bed, uh, building screens, those break pretty often in windows.
Really?
Yeah, basically enough. Um, and then, uh, and a lot of painting, those types of things. And then, uh, we'll have a large enough bay where we can, uh, if a truck breaks or something like that, we can pull it in and, um, do some work on it inside.
You're not planning on any massive change, you know, fluids or opening a jibby lube or anything?
No, definitely not, that would just be for, we have a one, one dump truck and one pickup truck and it's usually our cloud that breaks.
Yeah. There's another one else?
Yep. Um, and then otherwise, part of the building also will be used for our camp store, uh, which is mostly storage of sweatshirts, t-shirts, those types of things. And we do some mail order stuff for them holidays. But, um, you know, anything bigger ends up being at the physical building.
Any questions? Now the ones I had, we kinda got in the beginning.
Yeah.
Any outside light?
We'll have under the, there's an awning on the front of the, um, facilities barn.
We'll just have a couple under.
Softwood lights.
Yeah. But, um, and then the year round home would have extra stuff under the porch light.
And the access is off of?
Chase Point Road, so we'll close the access of one and nine completely. Um, you do see there's kind of like this buggy path that basically already exists.
Behind the baseball.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, so the main driveway access is off the baseball diamond.
Okay.
Yep, and that'll just go along Parkfield to go in.
And this is gonna be a new driveway, so the, um.
You already have it.
We already have that approved. Yep. Um, and, uh, off of one and nine, we'll close that off with just plantings, the old driveway to that house. And then you can see there's like a little buggy access, that's essentially a trail, we don't plant on. Probably actually eventually beat that off, it's just a secondary access, so I didn't try and avoid it.
Board have any other questions? All right, can I have a motion to open up here into the public? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anybody in the public have any questions? Nope? I think I'm good. So I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna continue this to a date, be certain, just just get those issues resolved and it should be.
And we will send you a list of the conditions.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to continue to, we can do the earlier date now, correct?
I'll make the motion.
The seventh?
Seven.
Okay. Motion to continue to March seventh.
So who? Who's you, you want to say?
I, I did, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First grade's.
When is your new setup gonna be operational?
Uh, I would like to say yesterday, but, uh, our plan is to have it complete by the fall. Um, we'll operate, uh, both systems hopefully this summer, the crossover. So, you'll see quite a bit of work going on, um, starting in a month, we're just starting right now. Yeah, it'll be a good project for us.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the next up, we have, uh, Fred Sargent, Tax Map thirty-two dash two dash four and thirty-two dash two dash six. Um, so this one's a little different, this is a preliminary discussion, which is non-binding. So, nothing the board says counts really, it's just, uh, you know, answer questions and nothing the applicant does is binding as well. Uh, but it's always a good idea to do them, we appreciate the fact that you guys are and I think, um, you were speaking on Fred's behalf, right?
Yep.
And you have, either have a letter stating that you're authorized to speak on Fred's behalf, or Fred can tell us that you're authorized to speak on his behalf.
Yeah, I just have, I don't have a letter.
Fred, is he authorized to speak on your behalf?
I thought it would be okay.
Right, it's just, yeah, it's just put, and you just put that in the record that. I'd say it probably wouldn't matter, but it's a non-binding.
That's all right. All right, so can I bring up some?
Yeah. Uh, just so everyone knows, this, this is gonna be a number of preliminaries. Are we gonna attempt to cover these kind of all in one conversation?
I hope so.
Okay, let's do that. So let me just make a little amendment here, we're also gonna be talking about Mary Jane Sergeant, Mary Jane, who's authorized to speak on your behalf?
Yes, yes.
And you got that as well? And that is Tax Map thirty-two dash two dash twelve. Anyone who's been to the dump will know that there is a number of sand pits in that area, which the sergeant said they were up. Here we go.
So, this is a, this, this plan was designed, um, as a subdivision plan. Fred took a lot out to give to his daughter. So I've been, um, I made a notation here that it's been amended from its original purpose and then doing some cut and paste and things. And I want to make sure that that's okay and acceptable.
As long as the person, as long as the person drew it's acceptable to them.
Okay.
Let's deal with that.
Okay.
Is that an RSA or anything? I don't know, I wish I had one.
Yes, a perimeter survey that covers, right, she wants a question.
I've had, um, you just required to have that this is not, you know, this was amended? If you don't mind, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask somebody who probably knows the answer to this. If nothing else, we'll all learn something. Brian, what's the, do you want that?
I don't really know, I know if there's a seal on a plan used at the planning board, that, that seal is supposed to at least get a certified mail that that plan's being used.
That's right.
As an butter.
If the.
Cause there is a seal on it.
If the seal, if it was recopied and the seal was covered over.
That, you're getting to plagiarism things too, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things at play doing what Fred is doing. But I know it's done all the time. But at a minimum, that, that seal there should get a certified mail for as an butter.
Okay. With any luck, the person who surveyed, that's no longer alive and you're clear.
All right, cause this was drawn, it's a perimeter survey of the lots and was drawn for the purpose of a subdivision from Fred to his daughter. So, I thought this would be acceptable for the survey portion. Uh, if not, you know, we don't have a plan drawn specifically for this site plan review process.
We don't require a survey on this particular thing because it's an existing lot, so. We don't require a survey on this particular thing because it's an existing lot, so it's not being created, it's already there.
So.
So, the biggest thing here is to figure out what's open now. What was open in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-ish. I know you, the house got moved towards the road, so it's pretty much what was behind the house. Where the house was, not where it is now.
Okay.
So, so I guess what we're saying is, is that, you know, it's not required to be surveyed by a survey. So.
So.
So if you had a white piece of paper that size that looked just like that?
Yeah.
That didn't have anything on it, that would be admissible.
Because you want twenty-four by thirty-six prints.
That's preferable.
Preferable.
And, and these are good sized sand pits, so that's probably a good idea. But it's not required that it be surveyed.
Not to what the grandfathering portion is? Over and above that?
Well, this just happens as a part plan of the lots for representation.
Correct. And you have on that, the part that's open now, sketched on there at all?
Yes, I sketched on there, very close representation as to what, this is, this is Mary Jane's lot. We have a five acre lot. And this is Fred's lot, which is now twenty-two, twenty-three acre lot. So, it's two lots, two owners, two intent exes. His portion is reflected here, and that's the outer perimeter.
Yep.
Along this side, there's a large burn, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, that, that's with the Carlton property pit. And I put elevation, spot elevations on here, which are, and you'll see it again on Fred's other pit plan. Michael gave us a fresh survey. He just had it properly surveyed. And it covers this burn and gave us points of the floor of the pit. So, surprisingly enough, Google Earth has a, an elevation monitor on there.
They do, yeah.
And if you take that and match it up with survey plans, it's very reasonably close. So that's how I came up with these other spot elevations. Okay, but we had, we had the, you know, survey quality.
Right. Where was the house?
The house was right about in this area.
Okay.
And I can show you, I'll pick it up here, you know, Google Earth. So, this is Fred's lot, the portion on his. And they calculate, both of them are almost equal, like between two and two and a half acres in total area of untreated surfaces. And that's Mary Jane's.
What was the date of the?
These two are fresh. These are the, this was off of the Avatar site, which gives you the overlay.
Yeah.
And these are Google Earth.
I went back a few years, it doesn't change.
No?
Yeah, this is two thousand sixteen, ten of sixteen.
This is the house right here, I assume?
No, that's the shed.
There it is.
That's a shed. The house was right in that circle, so.
Sorry, I can move on this.
Yeah, yeah. That was the, actually, that was the date that we put the house on the foundation. I happened to take a picture.
So to me, this is, I mean, this is clearly over and out.
Right.
So, other than making sure you have enough material to stabilize your slope for reclamation, I would, that's how I would interpret that.
Right. I mean, going to this perimeter tree line is, right, it's like I said, this is yours. Right, and this is Fred's.
This is Fred's, so.
Okay. You guys?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you guys have.
That's a two thousand sixteen.
This is Fred's property, this is Mary Jane's property.
I don't know, yeah.
The house is right, right in that circle, on the end of the circle of the driveway.
So you're thinking of the circle there, you turned around in front of the house, so the house was right here.
Now we're going to run into something.
Yeah, the house was right in that circle. That's the hole that was built in the foundation.
Right, this was a driveway that circled.
This is.
Cost of storage.
Rather than have this, you know, like that, just a big flat.
Okay, so the house was right here.
Yeah.
Right there. So, so it looks like not up here.
Yep.
That's where the house was. So this portion here, so the house was right here.
Why wouldn't just be?
Do you not have any scrubbed out already?
Because the house is.
Scrubbed out? Look, it's scrubbed out.
Right, I mean, it's.
The last way we said we have some still on, there's hundreds of square feet.
The intent of the pit was knowing that's a hundred and fifty, utilizing its space in all the pits.
House would use in the administration of that.
Incumbory, back area. It just took a long time to get it moved than we wanted to. So, this is an area drawn and photographed of it. Anybody wants to look at that, that was taken last week, what it looks like right this morning.
So you come up this way.
The road comes up this way, goes across, and then a lot of perimeter to get found. But these are stockpiles of materials, foam and some, we've got some bars and some stunt stands.
Usually at that complex.
It's all your standard. The property line is closer to this edge of the burn on our side. Most of this burn is on, it's carpet side. And we do. Mike and I had a couple of conversations and entered into an agreement that would, or early. We would like to cooperate with it.
If we're going to work at that for both sides and take it down?
Both sides and get that, get that firm down close to the ground level, you know, high enough to keep the division between the two and contain its runoff. But that'd make a huge difference.
It's a pretty, this is pretty low on here, is this uphill?
Just this, this grade and this grade are very close to each other. I'm going to see that on this plan.
So just keep in mind, if you have a road point, you know, the water might run out after the burn. Just, just enough to make sure the water drains down.
Barrier burns. Right now, this is all contained because it's all uphill slopes on the edges. If it were to run, it would run where these two, there's like an access road that connected the two sides beyond the end of that burn. So we'll have to do barrier if there's potential for any runoff that would be there.
Just something that gives the water time to go into the ground and not run over into wetlands and stuff like that.
Right.
And then we'll be, if we're going to look at doing that, you'll need a letter from both of you guys.
We currently have.
I assume, okay, it'll be, it's in everyone's interest. I think the finished product will be better anyway.
Of course.
The letters are in hand.
Are in hand, yeah. Yeah, make sure that's, just in case property changes hands and things like that, just make sure it's odorized and everything. That's more of your guys' interest than ours, but.
Sure. So, I guess they're just, they're just, we're going to go out and we're going to permanently mark the outer boundary. Correct, and everything that we do has to be inside of that.
Right, so you're going down here. And above what point is this going to level off, just down in here?
Well, I think it's probably going to, probably extend in, so this piece here will come out.
I mean, obviously this is mine, this is Fred's.
Yes.
This piece will come out. This will just gradually go down to.
We're going to have to, we'll have to, Fred's, yeah.
Just come in with a general plan on when you get to reclamation, what you're going to bring this, how you're going to treat this slope right here, what you're going to be at, such and so forth. Because this is that big.
This is that.
That's that big bag.
That's this one here. This is the, this is the steepest here. And then this is all downhill. That road is all downhill, all the way down, so the bank gets shorter and shorter. But it all has to be, we have to reclaim according to the regulations, and then it has to pass an inspection, so. You can't really get away with doing anything. It's two to one, so two to one.
And you'll know you'll need a test pit down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'll be in the spring. So, we'll schedule a test pit and just place that house, move to the walk and tenders of love.
So you can, we'll be a plan, whatever you have, the alignment you want, we'll walk it, see if they manage.
Sometimes they move down a little bit, sometimes they move up a little bit.
Yeah. All right, so if any of this, of course, I also want to know what, if any of this I should include in my, all of it? When I submit the application, all of it?
Yep.
Put it all in, okay. So it's basically going to be the same.
How do you measure it?
To eleven by seventeen, it'd be better. Eleven by seventeen? All of them, do you think?
If they're the same, no. You want something on the date, which that, more change.
Okay, so you want this one, which is sixteen, you want one that's a little over than that?
Yeah, one that shows the house back.
Okay.
Because that would be fourteen or fifteen. That's, that's the dates we're working on for the grandfather.
I might actually have that in this other one. This is four, seven, thirteen, April thirteenth. So three years earlier, the house is there.
But it's all cleaned out there, that's my.
I mean, the outer perimeter has remained the same for years, which has been digging into the hill.
This is Carlton.
Yep.
This is the dump, all dumped, Fred's pit.
That's our Carlton.
Fred's pit?
That's the big pit, right? This is the small one, but right now, it's like half of that. Half of it is Mary Jane's and half of it is Fred's.
So we don't talk about this one?
No, that's, that's actually next.
Okay. Not tonight, right?
Yeah.
Hold on, okay.
Well, same.
Okay.
Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's very close.
There goes, there's a, we scale this here, so this is about that deep.
Right, okay. Can I do that or is?
I can't.
I mean, I can sketch, I can trace it all, I'll add one piece of paper.
Who does it move? Get on to it.
Yes.
I thought it was just.
I mean, they want you now.
Those are castle, you just have to.
Okay, that's fine, that's a good way to go.
Yeah, that's fine.
Make sure your butt is accurate and see.
That's what we're going to do.
So a lot of this property change, address change. Double check, triple check.
Yeah, so you got the works right off the Avatar site, which is, I'll turn the computer to.
Yeah, it's time to do this. I think so, because that way you've got the.
My name is Paul Carter, this is a small one, just sort of it.
Yep.
So I'll make a copy of all these and submit it with.
Yeah, the new, some inches around forty. Something to make an oval mark.
All right, so, this is for the.
This is the big pit.
Tax map thirty-two dash two dash twelve. Brad, I assume you're still good?
What?
Just going to speak on, it's a separate law.
Separate law. So this one was double planned, it's a big lot.
So just so everyone knows, this is what, when you go to the dump, this is everything you see on the left and this is.
The way you just.
So this is, yeah.
So the town, the buildings are, are they? So maybe somewhere.
This was a subdivision plan to break up the town dump and the road. We subdivided it for that, to go to the dump, so, to go to the town, you just want to get a regular base with that. So presently, it's, presently it's eighty-two acres.
How big is the?
The, the access to the pit is still in the same location it's been for ninety-nine years after Elvis. Fred's grand father's.
This is the stump.
That's a stump area.
Where that's at.
This is a primary, some disordered storage area. And there are pockets of, you know, islands of rocks and rubbing.
Yeah, just, I just marked those on the plan here.
Yep.
So.
You did. That used to process material on here and stuff too, right?
So these are all the elevations?
Those are all my spot elevations, and what you'll see, well, in this area that I have outlined is somewhere in the vicinity of eighteen acres. And using that Google.
Maybe use a Google apparently.
If you take that, if we take that point area, you go over this, that entire area only has an elevation change starting at like six eighty to seven oh five. So it's like a twenty-five foot elevation variation throughout that entire area. If it was all open, it'd look almost like it was flat, but it's rolls and, you know, there's no steep slopes, there's no. If it was all open, it'd look almost like it was flat, but it rolls, and, you know, there's no, you know, steep slopes, there's no streams running through it, or wetlands nearby. So that's as far back as Google Earth shows, is ninety-nine ninety-nine. This is the dump road, yeah, this is the pit. And this was all Fred's property, one point, right, and he drove this out, and now we're in this. This is the power wagon, that goes through. So that's way back. This again is the two thousand thirteen. You know, without a full issue, right, so. Because he's trying to, the nature's trying to take this back. So you can try and see his.
There's two scales, because it all.
So you can also do this on, on that Avatar, it has a perimeter, you can go around, where do you think the perimeter might be? You know, we won't determine that, let's do that on the walk.
That's gonna be a, bring a candy mark.
Yeah, that's right.
Pass along for that.
So that's how I came up with that calculation, staying reasonably close to the perimeter on the calculation area.
Maybe say, we'll walk the journey, and see what's there for.
And just make sure you put down the area stump area, but if you have rock disposal or areas where you process materials and stuff like that, just write it down, so.
Should I write it on this, or, I mean, or write a sheet with?
I'd put it on.
On, on.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there's another couple of books out there.
I've been looking at it my entire life, with the dump, so.
So then, it should be included with the application.
Yeah, that one's really, I'll meet and include it, but what really matters is this one, and the other one.
Yeah.
But even, there's, there's virtually no change from.
No, there isn't.
There to there, so. All right.
Do I do it in the town, yeah, they take.
Yeah.
Maybe the large ones.
Less shadows, it's.
Yep.
It looks, it looks good to me, I mean, really, just, you put in the things that we talked about. I don't really see any flags there at all, anybody, it's pretty, uh, pretty vanilla. Yeah, you'll get, you know, the ball goes while you're at the normal conditions that everyone else is the same, it's going, a few elevations.
Yeah.
Perimeter law.
Perk tat.
Perk tat, yes, yes, yeah, not, not grandfathered in any environmental, you know, whatever you're there, and, uh. You know, pretty straightforward. Okay.
All right, so we've got enough here to submit an application.
Yeah. Good job. It's just the. Did anybody call the legal on the lot merger, I know it's. Can you guys have a question? I know it's a polling matter.
I, I have a question, I've seen Fenton appear for you, and this gentleman here, and no one has talked about the excavation permit. Take Fenton for example, does he not need both site plan, Google, and his excavation review and permit from you folks? He's gonna have.
And based on, he does the site plan, and he gets all that done, and everything's copesthetic, he will receive an excavation permit.
Okay, that would be an independent hearing or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
This is allowing the town to issue.
Right.
Okay.
And the reason being, if he can intend to excavate now, there's no permit number on it.
Right.
Now, if you permit, after the down rock, that's based on the intent.
Okay.
My initial reaction, when this came up, was, hey, this meant about seventeen permits, how many permits we have, for the current of the state didn't think that.
Right.
Seventeen?
Yeah, I just went around and kind of looked at it.
So how many applications have you cut down?
You have Steve, this would be three, and then ten, and that seventeen would be realistic number. I just kind of went around and looked at what was open, which would be San Diego, and all that, yeah.
It's, it's really in everyone's best interest to do it, and I've talked to, you know, a number of people, and said, hey, you know, you really just need to come in and do this, it's, you know, it's not that bad, and it allows you to continue to operate, and, you know, and you've seen the process, it's not a huge deal, it's documenting what's there, that's about it, and in a lot of ways, it's a good thing for the pit operation.
Right.
I, I wish we could have done yours, but as you know, we.
Right, there's one of those, we let it lapse, so.
Yeah, so if that hadn't lapsed, we would have been able to do the same thing. Brian thinks it's great.
Well, you're afraid of.
So you've done three, and who were the other fourteen, I can write a letter.
Um, so, nobody has any questions on any of that, Fred, you had a bunch of the pits, now you're good?
Yep.
So, the only thing tied to that is a lot merger, which is tax map thirty-eight dash one dash sixty, and thirty-eight dash one dash seventy-eight here. Jack, do you have an opportunity to?
Yeah, I actually remember. It's the plan protection survey. And what they want to do is remove that Google number, that little sign, because there's actually two lots of record.
Really?
Yeah. German actually owns three lots, and this one here, but it's not continuous, because there's an easement between it. And it's one deed with three parcels on one deed, and it's all set.
What, twenty-three?
Yeah, Thompson. Coming back about it, this little Thompson in the end, who's actually, just, actually two months of record on the line, so that, I'm just trying to make it right, just.
I can't, I can't imagine why he wants to do that. Thank you. I think you could.
Go straight home.
Uh, I don't think you need to mess with anything that you saw. Leave that, that's not on the.
I don't feel like, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be following the house, but that'd be a, a, what you said, pretty much, so. And the deeds matched, the name is the same, which is. Do you want? Make sure she approves it.
I'll second.
Always.
I, I. Great.
Do you think so? For people across the road and stuff?
All right, so.
Do the law, do the law.
Next up for discussion items is, we had somebody who wanted to be on the planning board. Bless his, uh, very quality, um, talked to him quite a bit, he's a real areaist, background on, uh, obviously, the state, uh, he's interested in doing it, um, I would like to endorse him for, um, appointment by the selectmen, I think it's an alternate, because we're at full members right now, and if you could carry on with that, though, unless. Do you have any concern?
I'll try and, I'll try to mention it, take care of the, Wolfro. It's a second five, you know.
Yeah, uh, that's all I got, anybody have any questions before we shut it down, sure.
As we all know, Wolfro has purchased property in Tuffenborough to expand their rapid infiltration of basic system, good or bad, I'm not sure how municipalities do, uh, legal things like change of land use and things like that, has the planning board, uh, reached out to their attorney to find out just exactly what goes on with a situation like that?
You know, it's interesting you brought that up, so I've had a bunch of people ask me about that, generally, municipalities are exempt from zoning, but that only happens, I believe, within their own town, so Tuffenborough is a different town than Wolfboro, so, in my mind, that would be a change of use, that they would not be exempt from, so, if it's a change of use, then, the way I would look at that, it's not listed on the table of uses, if it's not listed on the table of uses, it's prohibited, it would require a bearing, it would be a zoning, so.
Well, my question was, have, have you, the planning board, reached out to an attorney to find out any of this yet, or?
No, I have not.
I would suggest that now would be the time to start.
I was contemplating that, but, the planning board's job is not enforcement of zoning and things like that, that's actually more under the purview of the selectmen, but if I was the selectman, what I would do is I would file a right-to-know request for everything they got on what's going on on that property for the town of Wolfboro, and then I would contact the land use attorney who specializes in municipal law in particular, land use, to see what the rights of the town are, and then I would read, if they believed there was an issue there, I would retain that attorney, but, um, obviously, so, I guess that's a question better suited for the selectmen, unless.
You're helping, sitting right there.
Unless the selectmen know that this is a planning board issue, but I don't think it is.
If, it's a town issue, uh, and, uh, there has been some discussion with council.
Okay.
Good, that answers my question, thank you.
Sure. I did also have an interesting conversation topic with an engineer who specializes in that sort of system, which is actually kind of enlightening, but, basically, the. Wolfboro has the, the treatment system they have operating, you know, that treats the water before it gets pumped up to the, very well, and that the water that gets pumped up there, according to this engineer I'm speaking with, is actually quite clean, and that in normal, um, and I'm reciting this from a, so, and, uh, in many places, if there wasn't a lake, that water would be discharged into a river or something like that, but because it's a lake, it cannot be which prompted this, so, I guess it's not clear in my mind quite how clean or dirty that water is, that's.
Well, during my career in heavy construction, I was involved in the building wastewater treatment plants, and every one of them came with a guarantee you could drink the water.
Yeah.
None of them took up my challenge to do it, my big issue, as I pointed out in the candidates night, one of the big issues is that cyanobacteria can flourish at half the legal level that the Wolfboro treatment plant is allowed to discharge phosphorus, uh, and that, we all know, groundwater seeks the path of least resistance, and no matter how bad we test it, whatever we might do, we try our hardest, doesn't always work out, so, anyway, you answered my question, Bill said that they'd have to start picking the council, and, uh, we'll work from there, maybe I'll get, find out more about that after the election day.
Thing about the cyanobacteria, though, is, it could be there, you just don't see it, because it doesn't always move.
That's right, but, when the phosphorus level goes high, it moves.
Correct.
Thank you.
And we all learned something.
Yeah.
I guess that's it, can I get a motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Fred, you guys.